Welcome, everyone. We'll call this Board of Weber County Commissioners Meeting to Order, held this Tuesday, the nineteenth day of December at ten o'clock. I'm Commissioner Ebert. I'll maintain attendance along with Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner Gibson. I'll be giving the invocation today. Brian Barron will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Commissioner Gibson will have the thought about our heads. Our Congregations Heavenly Father, we humbly bow in our heads in prayer to give thanks for this amazing day. We're grateful for the change of the season and for what it brings to our lives. We ask a blessing upon those who have and are struggling through the difficulties in Florida and in Texas. We ask that you will strengthen them, that you will bless them, that the feeling of community and of volunteerism will help move them forward. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to gather as elected officials. We ask that you will strengthen us, guide us, and direct us in all things to help build and strengthen our community. We, again, are grateful for this amazing country, the liberties that it affords us, the freedoms that we enjoy, and we ask that we will live our lives in a manner that we can truly take advantage of them and express them. And we humbly ask for these prayers and blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a great public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, as far as the thought today, I just wanted to talk for a few minutes about one of the events that we had, one of the challenges that we had over the last little while, and we talked about it a little bit last week, this fire up in the New England Highlands and the challenge that it gave to us, that we faced as we dealt with it. I just wanted to mention a couple of highlights that I think are noteworthy. We had an opportunity yesterday to be involved in a debriefing with our emergency manager, Lance Peterson, as well as our team from the county and the fire operations folks, and it just reminded me of some of the heroism, I think, that took place in regards to that event, and at so many different levels. First of all, I was just thoroughly, thoroughly impressed with the quality and the training, and especially maybe more than anything else, the heart of these firefighters. There were some tremendously difficult moments, and there was one point when things were going crazy and we weren't able to get choppers in the air because of the weather, that one of the higher-ranking firefighters said to me with quite a bit of panic in his face, "Gosh, Commissioner, we may lose a hundred homes today." It was not looking good, and yet, as I watched them kick into this almost automatic mode that is just amazing, because you see them, I see them usually in the periods of, not in the middle of the crisis, but watching them in that crisis and kick into this mode where the training kicks in, where the knowledge that they've gained over the many years kicks in, and then it's almost like that fight and that heart kick in as part of, "Hey, this is not just something I've been trained well to do, but it's something I care about. I care about these people, and I'm going to do everything I can to make it work." They made some valiant stands, and I'll be the first to admit, there's no doubt about it, that we benefited from some divine intervention. I will never doubt that. But we also were the beneficiaries of a bunch of men and women who just absolutely wouldn't quit and put themselves in some tough situations to make sure that those people that they cared about were going to be safe. And so, while I know that it probably isn't of much comfort to two or three families, or three or four families who lost their home, what I am super grateful for is for all of those who didn't, because of the effort of these individuals and the work that they put forward and their simple lack of willingness to quit and to give up, their willingness to put themselves in harm's way. It reminded me a lot this last week of some of the similar type of heroism that we saw on a much larger scale during the whole ordeal on nine eleven, and just the basic concept that, well, most people were trying to get to safety, as they should, doing what they were being told, that there were first responders running in, most were running out. And these people are amazing and deserve our respect and appreciation. And I just, as I had a chance to meet with a few of them after, I ran into one of the firefighters that was just, had pulled the goggles off, was covered in soot all around his face. Because of the goggles, you could see the white marks around his eyes, and that was it. Whiskers, face all covered in soot, and big smile on his face. And I really didn't know exactly what he'd been through that day, but that really kind of showed me, because he was clearly in the heart of that battle and was not willing to say no. And so, anyway, I just want to express on behalf of the people that I represent, and frankly, my own heart, a tremendous feeling of gratitude for them and the work that they did and do on a daily basis, most of the time that we don't really see and we don't sit here and talk about, because it's not sensational enough. But this is one of those experiences that helped me to understand, these guys are amazing. They're well-prepared, and their hearts are in the right place. Now, just to add, it's not just them. They were the key, but there were so many of these wonderful acts of service that happened. And one of the stories we heard yesterday as well was really touching, and that was of a particular individual, a sweet lady who showed up at the event center with some water that day in bottles and wanted help. By that time, there were an awful lot of donations that had already come in, and the mechanism had kicked in, and the Red Cross was there. And the story goes that she was told that she maybe, that we really didn't need the water. There was plenty of resource there at that time. Yes, she didn't have much to begin with, but she pled that it be accepted and that we not take away from her the opportunity to show her children what was important to her. So, we took the water. And I think she could probably go on for quite a while with similar experiences, similar stories of those who just absolutely wanted to help, and still are to this day. I met with an individual yesterday who had gone to Houston with a group to try and help in their disaster, but only after helping to clean up here first from the fire situation. This is what our community is about, folks. This is what really makes us tick. It's individuals who love and care for each other and are willing to do the hard things before, during, and after a crisis, and reach out with a hand of love and appreciation. And for all the great things that are going on in our community, this is what makes me proud to be a resident of Weber County. It's how people care and love and want to be a part of each other's lives and want to make any burden that we might have lighter for one another. So, for all of you that can hear me today, all of you that are here, you are a part of that. For those who are in the room, you're as much my family, I think a lot of you, as those who were born into my family. And so, I spend, well, I know I spend more time with you than I do with my family, so that says something. But as I watch the dedication that you put into your assignments here, I'm just so grateful that this is what we are as a community, and this is what we care about. So, anyway, on a personal note, I just, I wanted to say thank you and excuse myself from commission meeting next week, because I will be retrieving my baby girl from her mission. And so, I hope that you'll bear with me, but I can't even hardly stand the anticipation. Been too long since I've seen my baby girl, so I won't be here next week, but thank you.
Next week, we're having pizza and cake?
[laughing]
Thank you, Commissioner Gibson. I just was going to add one. There were so many amazing stories, and here is one, and I'll make it quick. There are only three or four Wildland Level Three or Certification Three Incident Commanders within this tri-county area of Weber-Morgan and Box Elder. At the point the Incident Command was created, our Incident Commander Rick Cooper was contacted by two of those Wildland Level Three or Cert Three Incident Commanders who just happened to be in the area, arrived on scene shortly after, and were both sent out to different areas. One was Alpha, which is where we had most of the property damage. Another was Zulu, which was along the freeway. I mean, it's just amazing that we had three of the most qualified firefighters in the whole northern end of Utah on that fire within their first forty-five minutes to hour. And it just shows that we were truly blessed beyond the commitment and the sacrifice of the firefighters. We were extremely lucky that we were able to get all those resources on scene so quickly. So, again, we are blessed for sure. Commissioner Harvey, anything?
What we have such great talent here is because we share our resources in advance with other places so that those certifications can be achieved by our local folks. We didn't have to share our resources early, but now, because that old cliche of paying things forward, the result was, is we had a fantastic experience. Why did South Weber, and why did the fire not hit Riverdale? Because we had phenomenal people who did a backburn. We had enough resources in advance to get out ahead of it, do a backburn. So, when that fire started to raise through before it got to Adams Avenue, they did a backburn from there, and it stopped. And some of the rest of those stories are out there. They're just phenomenal.
I thought you were going to go with page two.
Page two?
Let me just follow real quick on what you started, Commissioner, with the Wildland Unit from Weber Fire. I think it's important to point out that a few years ago, or several years ago, they started this Wildland Fire Unit. And they go out and provide resource to fires all over the country with this unit. And it was interesting, the chief reported to us yesterday that that unit isn't always there just for us. I mean, yes, it's because of they go out and contract with other areas, they get paid when they go out. They're able to bring some equipment to the table that we wouldn't have otherwise had. But the reality is, the main purpose of that unit is that they have had lots and lots of practice. And when it came time to this particular event, these folks had already been on the ground on similar-type fires, and they kicked into this mode of knowing exactly what to do. And so, I think that's been a positive thing to have them out and about and well-trained. And anyway, good thing on behalf of Weber Fire, so.
Well, I want all of us to know in this room and in this county that we are champions. We are winners. We are champions of the Pioneer League. Our Ogden Raptors won in a two-to-one championship game, and we're going to make sure that we let the Ogden Raptors know how much, how proud of them we are. It's amazing. I was pretty excited about it. And we'll do some follow-up. We'll hopefully get some representatives from the Ogden Raptors here into some of our meetings, and then we'll work with Ogden to do what we can to let them know how excited we are. Again, you may not have felt it when you walked in the room, but you're going to leave knowing that you're champions here in Weber County, because our Ogden Raptors won the Pioneer League champion, so I'm excited about it. Well, that being said, let's actually start what we came here for today. We'll move into consent items. Item E, under E1, Request for Approval of Warrants 1197 through 1203 and 420816 through 421066 in the amount of $1,694, excuse me, $1,694,128.91. Item two, Request for Approval of Purchase Orders in the Amount of $46,969.45. Item three, Request for Approval of Minutes for the Meeting Held on September 12, 2017. Item four, Request for Approval to Delete the Following Parcel Numbers From the Tax Roll, and 15-027-0042. Questions, Commissioners? Seeing no questions, Mr. Hatch, would you go over our warrants and POs?
You bet. We had ten purchase orders this week, so a quiet week for $47,000. Thirty-two percent of that amount, or $15,000, was for the sheriff, and that was for Axon Cameras. Thirty-one percent, or $14,000, was for the parks, and that was maintenance equipment that was purchased, or that will be purchased. This week, our check run, we issued 258 checks for $1.7 million. Sixty-one percent of that, or a million dollars, was for the library construction. And then six percent, or $106,000, was also for the library. That was split between books, building maintenance, computer equipment, and utilities. And speaking of library, today, the Elections Office will be out at the Southwest Branch, the, sorry, the new Roy Library. We will be reading the story of the Three Little Pigs from the pig's perspective and the wolf's perspective, and then allowing kids to vote on who is telling the truth. So, it's part of our Constitution Day celebration. In conjunction, we're doing a thing Thursday night as well, up at Pleasant Valley Branch with a panel.
I've never heard it from the wolf's perspective.
There's a great book called The True Story of the Three Little Pigs by A. Wolf, Alexander Wolf. And it's a hilarious story, so we'll see if he prevails.
Thank you, Ricky, and thank you for being such a big part of our community and really bringing light to one of the most important things we can do as a Democrat or Republican, and that is elect our officials, and how we can do that in a manner that is trustworthy and creates a viable government where people, yeah, creates competency. So, thank you, sir. Any questions specific to the warrants or the POs? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion.
How many motions will we approve? Consent items is read?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? It passes. Thank you. We'll move to action items. Number one, Request for Approval of a Contract Buy-in Between Weber County and the Park City Polka Players for Entertainment at the 2018... How did Matt say it? Hoff?
Hoff.
At the Hoff German Fest. No, you weren't here. It was Hoff. I heard him. Carrie Montgomery.
Good morning.
Montgomery, it's a pleasure to see you today.
Nice to see you guys. So, the contract is for Park City Polka Players. This will be the first time they will be joining our German Fest. The contract is for $1,500 for the two days.
Awesome. How did you find them?
Tony with Salisbury Echo, he recommended them. He actually played with them up at the Solitude Oktoberfest. So, we will actually have them during Friday with the high school kids. They play specifically polkas. We played them for the committee on Thursday night, and they are super excited to have them.
When is our Hoff Festival?
January nineteenth and twentieth.
Okay, just as a reminder to those watching, let's schedule that, January nineteenth and twentieth. It's an amazing festival, again, celebrating another culture and community. Any other questions for Ms. Montgomery, Commissioners? Seeing none, open for a motion.
I'd move that we approve the contract between Weber County and the Park City Polka Players to entertain at the 2018 Hoff German Fest.
I have a motion. Do I have a second on the Hoff German Fest? It's been seconded. Any further discussion on Hoff? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Yes, it's pronounced Hoff.
Okay. Item number two, Request for Approval of a Contract Buy-in Between Weber County and the Gruber Family Band for Entertainment at the 2018 Hoff German Fest. Carrie, Ms. Montgomery.
So, this will be the fifth year we have the Gruber Family. They're out of California. The total contract would be $3,500 to play for the two days.
Wonderful. Questions, Commissioners? How many years have they been coming?
This will be their fifth year.
Fifth year.
Well, it's their fifth time here, but they didn't come one of those years, so it's not consecutive.
Right.
But they're a great Oompa-like band. They play all up and down the ribbon of California, and some of those in Oregon and Washington. It's a great band for, great band.
I know exactly what he means when he says "oompa-like."
Oompa-like. Okay. All right.
I don't believe there's anybody in the audience that doesn't know what that is.
Me!
Any further questions for Carrie? Seeing none, open for a motion.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? It passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hope to see you next week. Item number three, Request for Approval of a Contract Buy-in Between Weber County and Eden Heights LLC for Revenue Sharing. Brian Barron.
Commissioners, this revenue sharing and easement agreement may not look like much, but this has been in the works for years, and it's great to see this finally come to a conclusion. This all started back in 1968, when the county signed an agreement with Alvin and June Kobe for a piece of property up in Eden that we put a television transmission tower on. Through an oversight back then, the property wasn't actually transferred into the name of the county. And back in 2008, someone working for the county realized that the property wasn't in the name of the county and began working to correct that. So, we've been negotiating with Eden Heights since 2008 on this. We finally reached an agreement whereby they will transfer the television tower property to the county in exchange for this revenue sharing agreement. We don't have to pay them anything if we're not making anything off the property, but if we put something up there where the county's making revenue, then we have an obligation to share thirty-five percent of that revenue with Eden Heights. And that will last for twenty-five years. At the conclusion, the agreement is terminated, and the property is ours free and clear. In addition, they are granting us an easement, which allows us access to that television tower property. Any questions about these agreements?
Thank you, Brian. Really quickly, this is an example. We've had several meetings on this discussing access to the property, what next steps are, how we could work with Eden Heights to move this forward. Those were meetings that were held in our executive close meetings that sometimes we'd come out of this meeting to go into to discuss property acquisition, things like that. So, just as an example, this is one of the things, sometimes when you wonder what we're back there talking about, it would be items like this. Sometimes we come out of those with no action, because staff's been given some direction to move forward on some things, and then we come back and bring it forward to the commission meeting for review. So, just a little general information on sometimes what we're talking about. So, any questions or concerns, or any other statements, Commissioners? Open for a motion.
I'm moving that we approve the contract between Eden Heights and Weber County.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? It passes. Thank you very much. Item four, Request for Consideration and Action for Final Subdivision Approval of the Mountainside PRUD Phase One, including Approval of the Improvement Guarantee Agreement with a Letter of Credit. Rhonda Kippen, Rhonda, good to see you.
Good to see you too, Commissioners. Good morning. It's a rough morning for me. It's my Monday. I went camping over the weekend. It was awesome. It was cold. It was fun. So, the item that we're looking at today is a part of the Bridges PRUD that we approved back last year, or was it earlier this year? I think it was earlier this year. Let me look at my notes. So, yes, earlier this year, last year, 2016. And so, the Mountainside PRUD is one of the six communities in the Bridges. The Bridges is approved for 364 units. It's a multi-phase development, and it will have a variety of housing options. It will also offer 143 acres of open space. Mountainside PRUD Phase One will consist of 24 lots and approximately 1.649 acres of common area, which will include a four-foot soft trail running through two of the three common area parcels. This subdivision has gone through quite an extensive review process. It's been looked at against our zoning and locked yard setbacks. The PRUD was approved for a 15-foot front yard, seven-and-a-half-foot side yard, and a rear yard of 20 feet. For those homes, they'll have two front yards, based on them being a side corner street. Those will also have a 15-foot front yard on both side and front to allow for clear sight along those streets. We've reviewed this subdivision against the Ogden Valley Sensitive Lands and the Natural Hazard Overlay Zone within our code. We've actually identified a few of the lots that have to have additional geologic and geotechnical work done at a building permit level. But the good thing is, is that we have actually eliminated the rest of those lots from having to go through that level of analysis at the building permit. So, it will really streamline the pain that we went through last year with almost every single building permit having to go through geology and geotechnical. There are the possibility of a few of those lots still having our designation on them. We're still vetting that out. There's three lots that could have slopes that exceed 25%. And so, waiting to hear back on those three lots of whether they have the average or not. But other than that, they have completely addressed all of those. We've got the adequate culinary irrigation, sanitary sewer disposal approvals, and all review agencies have reviewed and approved the proposed subdivision as it stands. This subdivision has been approved for nightly rentals, and so, a note will be on the plat to notify future property owners that this subdivision does have the ability to have nightly rentals. A note is also on the plat saying that there is the geological and geotechnical reports on record with the Weber County Planning Division, so that any property owner wanting to know what is going on with their lot can come in and review that document. And a separate notice of hazard, potential hazard disclosure will go on title with this plat to notify future property owners of this investigation that has gone forward. We are asking for, in addition to the final subdivision plat, the improvement guarantee. This is the first letter of credit that we've done in some time for Weber County. done in some time for Weber County. Um, to qualify, you have to have a million dollars, uh, worth of improvements. The applicant has done a substantial amount of improvements on site and actually has reduced that amount. So, the, um, cost estimate was in excess of, of a million dollars, but the outstanding items that need to be completed total eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-four, uh, dollars and forty-six cents. This letter of credit has been reviewed by, um, our county planning director, engineer, the, the county treasurer, John Bonds, Scott Park, and the county attorney that was over the, um, Upper Valley Courtland Erickson. So, I think we have got all review agencies that have looked over the letter of credit with the exception of the county commission. So, uh, any other questions you guys have for me?
John Bonds reviewed it. It's good. It's gotta be good.
Yeah. Yes, and we now know that we need to give him a good week to review them. So, he, he wants to go over every, every letter. And so, he's, he's been in possession of it since last Friday reviewing it. And this morning, he gave us a thumbs up on it.
This is our first letter of credit for a while. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Under the new process that we created?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey, any thoughts or questions?
I have any.
Okay. Any further discussion, Commissioners? Open for motion.
I'll make, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve final approval of the Mountainside PRUD Phase One, including the, the improvement guarantee with the letter of credit.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Do I have any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any post? It passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number five, request for consideration and action for final subdivision of the Parkside PRUD Phase One, including approval of the improvement guarantee agreement with a letter of credit. Rhonda.
Thank you again, Commissioners. Uh, this is the second, uh, community within the Bridges that we will be, um, moving forward. This subdivision consists of fourteen lots and approximately two point nine seven acres of common area. Um, the Parkside PRUD, uh, will actually have three phases and an overall of seventy-two units. Uh, this has also gone through the same vetting process. I will make mention that on the Mylar for you guys to sign, there will be one additional note that we'll be adding on to that. Um, it got missed when they printed it, but there needs to be a side yard. The Parkside subdivision, instead of it being lots, is actually building paths. And so, two lots actually border the exterior boundary of Phase One subdivision. So, we will be adding one additional note saying that those two lots have a seven point five foot side yard setback. So, that will be penciled in after we, um, are able to collect your signature today. Uh, with that note, um, this has been reviewed against all land use and zoning regulations. It has also been, um, looked at for natural hazards overlay. There are four lots that will have to have additional geologic and geotechnical investigation prior to a building permit. A note has been placed on the plat for those and, uh, notice will be filed against the title on those properties, so that future property owners will be aware of that requirement. All review agencies have reviewed this against their standards and have recommended approval. Um, and I think that's it on this one. Um, the common area basically, it is a two point nine seven acres, which consists of thirty-three point nine percent of the eight point seven four acres of Phase One.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions?
Oh, sorry.
Rhonda.
Forgot. In addition, the most important part is why we're here. Um, in addition to what you're considering today is the approval of the improvement agreement guarantee for, and this is also a letter of credit in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. This will be the second letter of credit.
Okay. Feel comfortable about this one, Rhonda?
I do.
You feel comfortable about the developer?
I do. Are they behind me?
They are. They weren't grinning a second ago. They're grinning now.
Yeah, no, they, they're great to work with. Um, they come through with their promises. And so, uh, that, that means a lot to staff when we can actually work with somebody, get a quality, uh, quality design at the end and, and then see it come. It actually looks good on paper, but then when it actually comes out, it's even better. And, and so that is a real, real satisf, really satisfactory to staff, so.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion, uh, regarding the consideration and action for a final subdivision of the Parkside PRUD Phase One, including approval of the improvement guarantee agreement with a letter of credit.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any post? It passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the tremendous amount of work that summed up in a five-minute presentation. That's probably been six months' worth of a tremendous amount of work.
It has.
So, thank you very much. And to you, and please pass that along to all of your staff.
Staff, yeah.
Sure. Well, thank you.
Including your subordinate, Ricky.
It's to, it's to him that we're able to do such an amazing job, so.
Thank you very much. We'll move to item number six, request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and Caterpillar Financial Services Corporation for a solid waste heavy equipment for your lease. Mr. John Watson.
We have the same haircut.
You look more like the John Watson that I know. So, he's not Matt Dixon. Sean Wilkinson.
Thank you for pointing that out as well.
Our director. I wear my, I wear, I got glasses. I got my, I've got my John Lewis glasses on.
He's a lot better looking than Matt Dixon.
He is. He's, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have before you this morning a contract to lease new equipment for the transfer station. We are looking at eight pieces of equipment, including excavators, loaders, and skid steers. The annual contract is four hundred forty-seven thousand, forty-five dollars. And that includes maintenance and repair for the five years of the contract. So, we're in, in, uh, need of new equipment out there. It's been a long time coming and we're excited about this.
Do we own the old loader that's there?
We do.
Okay, great. Is, is it being, uh, turned in as part of a payment?
Uh, it's not to my knowledge right now, that we will eventually be doing something with that, uh, but I believe we are still paying on to it for right now.
Okay.
Commissioners, any further questions specific to these equipment?
Well, I am, um, a John Deere man through and through, of green blood. Um, but, uh, their landfill equipment is yellow too, so there's probably no difference here, right?
That's right.
Um, no, I, this is, uh, uh, this is a needed, a needed thing. And I just want to point out that, um, this has been discussed in our, um, what do you call that? The, the, what committee was?
Transfer Station.
Transfer Station Committee, Subcommittee, which is a, a Subcommittee that's organized by the Council of Governments. And as you know, the, the, um, Council of Governments, the, the cities all participate in, in, with, with the funding of the transfer station. And, and so, we felt like it was important to run this by them. Um, so, uh, this has been vetted and, um, the price is right. And that's, I think, the most important thing for what, what we need. And I, I, I want you to just pass on to John, um, who apparently isn't able to be here today, um, that we are grateful for the, uh, steps forward out there at the transfer station. We're hearing good things, I think, on a daily basis. And I am anyway. And, uh, and he's really taken it to a, to a, a new level. And, and I, I think it's a, a positive step. I, I think that goes to, to your leadership as well and, and John's. And, and, uh, anyway, I think it's a positive thing as we move forward. So.
Thank you.
Um, I'm, I'm in support of the contract.
Wonderful. I know Matt Dixon was also a big part of this.
I missed the second shot. Uh, any further discussion, Commissioners?
Oh.
I'll make a motion that we approve the con, the contract between Weber County and Caterpillar.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any post? It passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Sorry. Uh, we'll move to item number seven, is a request for approval of an interlocal agreement buying between Weber County, Morgan County, Morgan City, Huntsville Township, and Wasatch Front Regional Council to establish the Morgan County Ogden Valley Rural Planning Organization. Uh, we presenting that. Um, presently, the Lower Valley, um, Ogden and all of the participating municipalities, uh, of which COGS is, uh, made up of, uh, participate in an MPO or a municipal planning organization. That organization, uh, looks and works with the state through Wasatch Front Regional Council to provide planning and other resources for all of our transportation corridors, uh, and also into the area of economic development and, and some other areas. Um, under this structure of an MPO, the Upper Valley is, has not, uh, traditionally been included and has not had any projects that are specific to some type of planning organization, um, being moved forward at this time. I think one is maybe in Genesis today. Uh, Morgan County contacted us because they wanted to work with us and create a rural planning organization that will work with Wasatch Front through its staff to help provide better planning for transportation corridors in the Upper Valley. We know right now from, uh, the study that was just completed, I believe, last summer, that there is some specific issues with the transportation corridors in the Upper Valley. Uh, I cannot remember the exact date, but I know within the next ten years, there's a concern that they may have infrastructure failure with the transportation corridors, uh, between Twelfth Street and the North Ogden Divide and then up over Trappers Loop. Uh, and so, it's imperative that we get ahead of this. Uh, and as of present date, really, the only institution that is doing any type of planning would be, uh, Department of Transportation. Um, felt, we felt it very important that we had local representation, uh, on some type of planning organization. So, we're, I'm proposing today that we enter into agreement to create that regional planning, excuse, rural planning organization, uh, in conjunction with Morgan, Morgan County and Morgan City, uh, to move that forward. Uh, there is a financial component to that because we are talking about staff. Quickly, I'll cover that. Uh, Department of Transportation is willing to, uh, help us get this started, maybe take a little bit of work off of their plate. Uh, and so, they're willing over the next three years, um, to assist us in establishing this with a fifty thousand dollar contribution over that period of time, which would leave, uh, about thirty thousand dollars for Weber County and Morgan County to match. That's approximately ten thousand dollars a year. Within that ten thousand dollars a year, Morgan County has agreed to pick up the five thousand, which would leave, uh, Weber County and the Upper Valley to pick up the other five thousand. We proposed this to the COG and the COG felt that the five thousand dollars for that yearly, uh, RPO cost would fall within the planning purpose of, uh, some funding. And we're willing at this point, um, for the next three years to pick up our Weber County match. And so, that's where we stand today, uh, with an approval and recommendation from the COG to move forward with the RPO for the Upper Valley into Morgan. Questions?
So, when you say pick up the, the five thousand for the match, are you talking, uh, from transportation funds from the third quarter?
Correct.
Okay.
Out of the COG funding.
Our match is ten.
And it's. Our match, our match for Weber and Morgan would be ten thousand dollars. But Morgan, um, has agreed and, and please, Douglas, if you would step up here, maybe you could answer any legal questions and, and for clarification. But our match for the RPO from the local match is ten thousand with Weber, uh, five thousand dollar match and Morgan a five thousand dollar match.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. Um, just one clarification. Commissioner Gibson referred to the third quarter sales track, sales tax fund for transportation. Um, the expenditure for, related to, to this agreement comes out of our quarter preservation fund.
Okay, that's, that's.
Specifically, the statute allows us to, to support transportation planning, as you suggested.
Got it, okay. I kind of assumed that. I'd said it wrong when I said the third quarter. I meant that.
And I answered it incorrectly, so we were both on the same page. Yes.
Well, it, it's, it seems to me that it's a, it's a good fit, um, in that area. And, um, that being the case, I, I think it's always good to, um, to plan appropriately ahead of time, uh, measure twice and cut once. And, and I, I like, I like where this is going. It also seems like a, an example of one of those areas where, um, you can't always very, uh, boil down into, into a certain county. I think sometimes it makes sense for areas that may have similar interests to work together, even when they are, um, outside of a county, uh, boundary. And, and I think we see those examples on a state level as well as, as the county level. But, um, I, I, you know, I think it does make sense that, that, uh, Mountain Green and Huntsville have a lot in common. And, and I think having a partnership come together to accomplish something like that makes good sense. So, um, it sounds like we're on the right path here.
That, I'll make the motion that we approve the interlocal agency agreement buying among Weber County, Morgan County, Morgan City, Huntsville Township, and the Wasatch Front Regional Council to establish the Morgan County Ogden Valley Rural Planning Organization.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any post? It passes. Thank you very much. Uh, now, as time set aside for a public hearing, I'll entertain a motion, uh, for approval to adjourn our public meeting and convene a public hearing. Anyone?
I'll make that motion that we adjourn our public meeting and convene a public hearing.
And I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any post? It passes. The purpose of this public hearing is consideration and action on an application to vacate the retention basin easement on lots four, five, and six, and fourteen in Mallard Springs subdivision at approximately twenty-four seventy-five south, four thousand west. Rhonda Kippen.
Thank you again, Commissioners.
You guys are, you guys, you can't be playing musical presenters. You get me confused.
We try to keep you on your toes, to be honest. Commissioner Gibson, I don't know. We might have to have a meeting 'cause I bleed red.
You're a red girl?
I'm a, I'm an international harvester, so we might have to have a chat afterwards.
You're still living in the past.
In the past.
That's because they last that long.
That is, that is true.
They don't even make them anymore.
Uh, it's good to be here again, Commissioners. Um, so we, we, we went over this briefly last week, but just to summarize, uh, we are looking at vacating, uh, as Commissioner Ebert said, lot, uh, a storm retention basin, basin easement that is located along the rear of lots four, five, six, and fourteen in Mallard Springs subdivision. Mallard Springs subdivision is a twenty-one lot subdivision. It was recorded in December twenty fifteen. Um, when they went and started to, uh, excavate the subdivision and, uh, do the improvements for retention basin, the basins filled with, uh, water and they remove, they remained filled with water year-round due to the high groundwater in the area. Um, we worked with the, the county engineer and all agreed that this was the nuisance. We needed to find another place to locate, uh, a detention or retention basin. So, this, uh, new, the, with the, uh, collaboration with county engineer, the developer, uh, they decided that a new detention basin would be within Cameron Cove subdivision. And it will serve the stormwater needs for Cameron Crossing, Cameron Cove, and Mallard Springs subdivision. The new detention basin will have an outlet that will release stormwater at a gradual rate into the storm drain onto twenty-two hundred South Street. Um, uh, the, the detention basins have been constructed, uh, prior to recording the ordinance that will vacate these easements, we will actually have the new easements for the storm drain detention areas going from Mallard Springs to Cameron Cove in place, uh, so that we can make sure that, uh, everything is legally addressed that way. Any questions?
Who's responsible for these detention basins or detention areas?
The county. We do have the applicant, or the authorized, uh, representative, Jason Hamblin here, if you do have any questions for the applicant.
Questions, Commissioners?
No, but this is a, so, in the event that the retention basin had water in it and we had a fire out there, uh, we don't have to get permission in as much as we're responsible for the retention basin. We can go ahead and dip that, uh, for fire prevention or for firefighting.
I would assume so. It's, it's dedicated to the county. It's a public utility easement. Um, I would, I would anticipate that we would have the right.
There may have some.
That's more of a legal question though.
In the event of a fire and you're going crazy, you know, it's just nice to have water sources.
It is, it is. And I, I know there's something that, you know, when it comes to life safety, welfare, that you do have the right to go on to private property for certain reasons. So.
Just fresh on the mind.
Yeah, it is, it is all fresh on the mind after we went out to the site visit of the fire. And it, it was amazing what spots it hit and what spots it didn't. And just devastating, so.
I have no other questions?
Thank you, Rhonda. Uh, now we have time available for public comment specific to, uh, what we're considering today. Is there anyone that has attended today that would like to, um, express public comment on our request? request to vacate retention basement, basin easements? Anyone? Okay. Seeing no one here for public comment, I'll entertain a motion for approval to adjourn our public hearing and reconvene our public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're back into our public meeting, action on our public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Commissioners, there will be an ordinance twenty-nine, twenty-nine.
That we approve the ordinance number twenty-nine, to vacate the retention basin and easement on lots four, five, and six, and fourteen in Mallard Springs subdivision.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Aye. It passes, thank you very much. Now is the time set aside also for just general public comment, is there anyone here that would like to make a general public comment? Okay. Quinn's here today, no. Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Well, what about Matt Dixon? Matt's not here today, it's only Shaun Wilkinson. That's the same place he was sitting last week. No, he was back where Holland is. I'll make a motion that we adjourn. I'll second that motion, just get out of here. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we adjourned.